Great, um, well, it is twelve o'clock on Thursday, October fifth at the finance meeting. Um, I'm Kelly Lessons, the only board member present at the time. I believe the other board members are on their way either remotely or in person. Present Bellamy is online. Um, go around the room for the record for guests.
MJ with communications.
Meredith Smith, internal audit.
It's probably means funny to encourage internal audit. Edra of CFO, Mark Foster, yes.
Your Brian Superintendent.
Jim Anderson, COO.
Amanda Foster, executive assistant to the board.
Katie Perrin, senior director, management project.
Aurora Cobra-Lance, senior director, finance.
Grace.
My name is Julie Colom, I'm representing for district.
Thank you all very much for being here today.
And members Domi and members Jacob, Jess Joyce as well.
Okay, great, thank you, board members online. Um, so we have three items on the agenda today, and the first one is internal audit on fixed assets. For board members online, you have a publication in your mailbox here in the boardroom. And notes are, the document is also available online. So I'll, I'll give it for guests.
Okay. We have a complaint on audit of Anchorage's school districts fixed asset controls. And we issued our Anchorage ASD internal audit report two thousand twenty-three zero-two fixed asset controls on September twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-three. Overall, we found that controls over the school district fixed assets can be improved. Specifically, our review found that centralized assets at Anchorage School Districts were not always tracked and inventoried properly. And schools were not tracking and maintaining decentralized assets. In addition, the fixed assets disposal process did not always comply with the board policy. Moreover, the truck transfer form that is currently used for transferring those, transferring and circling fixed assets did not always include the needed information to accurately track the fixed asset history in business class. Finally, schools did not always submit the fixed asset inventory count to the central accounting by the due date. There were five findings in connection with this audit, and management was responsible to the findings and recommendations. And I'm open to any questions.
I'm going to begin with a very basic question for anybody who is watching. Can you give us a definition of a fixed asset?
Sure, fixed assets is anything that has a useful life over a year. And in this case, there's two different kind of classes based on timing. So up until, I believe it was twenty twenty, we had fixed anything over five hundred dollars for the useful life of a, um, over a year would be tagged. And then we, then we changed it to five thousand dollars. So we have a lot of these really old assets that were, that were tagged with like lower values than what we currently do. So we had a really big volume accumulated over the last, you know, thirty, forty years that were in our system that we're trying to clean up with our last, the last time we went through with accounting to reconcile our assets.
There any questions online initially?
Not right now.
Can I just clarify?
Yes.
Jim's at Techno Trump Technologies, that was a different classification.
Um, so a lot of the older assets would have been technology. So we'd have like laptops, anything over five hundred really now. And now, you know, any technology that's over five thousand is only going to be servers or some other like really large piece of equipment that IT would house centrally.
I guess could you give, spend a little more time with each of the findings then?
Can you give me a moment?
Yes.
So out of the five findings, the first finding was centralized assets are not always tracked in inventory. Specifically, when we went to some of those schools, we selected five schools, an elementary school, a middle school, high school, alternative charter school. When we had gone to those schools, we found some assets that were marked as accounted for on the list submitted to accounting. But when we went to actually find those items, we were not able to locate them. Some of these items were marked as verified as the schools weren't able to tell us. Um, they weren't sure by getting the list to accounting with the asset Marcus can't find, how would that in turn affect the school? So they listed some of the items as verified. So with that, we just found that maybe potential training could be improved to help with some of those schools as far as identifying the assets. And what will happen when you mark as can't be found and some additional research that could go with those items? Um, in addition, we found some items that were marked as couldn't be found on the list that during our inventory, we then found specifically one of the lighting fixtures. It was in the theater room and that the staff wasn't able to tell exactly where the asset tag was. They marked it as couldn't be found, and it was removed from the asset list. But when we did our review, we did find it there and gave feedback of how to better find these or better track the assets. These were some of the centralized assets. Another issue that we found with this was when the departments run the report, they might not have the full access to everything on their list, on their location. So specifically at the alternatives school, there were a number of assets that weren't accounted for because they didn't have it on their list, which our list was different when we went to go review because we ran it by that specific location. Hopefully that makes a little bit of sense.
Yeah, a little context into that specific issue, like, for instance, King Tech, if they have a lot of assets, if they bought them with their King Tech account code, they'll show up because they're tied to that user and that school's, um, their funding source. But a lot of that stuff would be bought by either CTE department or a Carl Perkins grant that's managed by CTE. So their user access might limit them from seeing stuff that was purchased on a gift by a different funding source. So that's kind of what we found on those instances. We need to work with our schools for those specific instances to make sure that they have the full list to try to inventory.
So I was saying, so it sounds like you have a path forward for how to address these findings.
Yeah, for the most part. Some of it's just going to be like the volume of, with the centralized assets and the decentralized assets, the sheer volume that we have of things that we were tagging in the past and for decentralized has to be tagged now. You'd almost see the full-time position at every school to be able to monitor that and track and inventory it. So a lot of this is just, um, we'll get better over time as we age out those small dollar value items. Um, but just having the manpower to do it is not something we have, nor could we probably afford in the near future. So there will still be some issues that we probably expect, but it will phase out as we look at some of those lower value items.
The second finding that we had was specifically for decentralized assets, and those were assets valued from a hundred dollars to four thousand ninety-nine dollars, which was updated in twenty twenty. Because of that update where prior schools were having to inventory everything, and then after July twenty twenty, they only had to inventory items five thousand dollars or more. Uh, we believe it caused a lot of confusion because out of the five schools we went to, none of them were tracking decentralized assets. And a lot of it being lack of training, not sure how to track those items, as well as get the tags and things like that from accounting. So our recommendation again was just, you know, going over that policy and then working with the schools to ensure that they have the right tools they need to track those assets and making sure that they're not spending too much time tracking low dollar items. And again, management was responsive.
Can I ask, so when you talk about, you know, a school would need better practices, I mean, is this going to, we're going to be leaning on principal for this or be a DPO or sort of everyone? I mean, who's in charge at a school level of helping?
Um, throughout these findings, I think we need to, need to lean on everyone. Generally, it's been the principal or the administrative assistant that goes and tries to find these assets. But some of this will come up again when we talk about the disposal of those assets. And when people just have like a pallet of things that are going to be surplus, you know, there's, uh, parent professionals, teachers, DPOs, they're all throwing stuff on this pallet. It gets wrapped up and shipped over to the warehouse. And if they don't know that if this thing has a value of two hundred and fifty dollars or an estimated value to notify a person that's in there, that's just all squeezed into one box. So it's really kind of a district-wide training for anyone that's going to be throwing stuff on these pallets for disposal.
A lot of people train.
It is, yeah. And so that's what's happening, it's going to have some incremental improvements, but a hundred percent solution is probably going to be.
Question. Number taken.
I was going to say, when you asked a question about if multiple people, that my experience is when you got more than one person responsible, nobody is responsible or help account. So that's my concern.
So the next item was the fixed asset disposal process needs improvement. Board policy AR three-two-seven-oh states, um, any asset with a current dollar value of two hundred and fifty dollars or more should be submitted to the board for review. And during our audit, we found that that was not happening with the items submitted to accounting, specifically marked as surplus or can't be found when we looked at the report that was coming to the board members. Specifically, some of those items were items that were again marked as can't be found or surplus. Instead of additional research being done to find out what exactly may happen to those items, they're generally just taken off the list. With further review done, a lot of those items were potentially not at the schools and couldn't be found, like all VCR play reporters and things like that that would have been obsolete. Due to this finding, we did review that there were a number of assets, specifically at one school we had gone to where they listed a hundred and sixty-six items as can't be located and five hundred and thirty-one items as surplus, which were then all removed from accounting, from the business plus. And then instead of going to the board for review, hopefully that makes sense. And I apologize in advance, I'm getting a little bit used to my public speaking skills. So if you guys have any questions, please let me know. Um, so that process could be improved just to give a little bit more research into the systems as far as what is actually found at the schools and what is truly not, or what is truly needs to go to review to the board. That was that finding. And so.
Sorry, I just want to clarify, it looks, I mean, I don't know, when you say it's an anchor school board policy, that's, it's, it looks like it's an administrative regulation, not a board policy specifically, which is often, that's what we would call.
Maybe.
I mean, it's an AR, so I guess they just would want to point out that this is a, it's not a board, something the board has made, but we delegated the duties to the administration to sort of figure out the best practices for itself.
I know a lot of these things can be lost when they're getting disposed of at the school level. When they get to purchasing, purchasing is generally pretty diligent about estimating the value of them and putting those on the board members that you see come through. Um, but if they don't know that, if the school's just disposed of it and we don't know what the value was, they don't have a chance to estimate it. Most schools probably don't know that that's AR policy exists. So we do have some training to do there to make sure that they're aware anytime they're throwing a piece of equipment away, that they should let us know for valuation purposes.
I mean, is this, is this something that would come at a general leadership meeting or through and on the radar? I mean.
Yeah, probably more on the radar type things. I mean, it probably, or probably needs to be sent out to more staff than just the principals.
Okay.
Um, because there's a lot of people that dispose of stuff at the schools, I think.
What are the risk factors associated with this? I mean, we've got dollars, faces, pennies sometimes and other things like that. And take, take with that to pass, I know, different finance committees. What do we do in line with how big of a concern is this?
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the dollar value seem, some of them seem fairly large, and aggregate is fairly large as well. Um, but frankly, I think the schools do a pretty good job of wanting to take care of what they have just because they have limited resources as well. Uh, so at the school level, I think they want to do a good job and keep what they have and not unnecessarily lose or, um, throw stuff away. So I don't know how big are really our exposure is on that for, um, you know, good pieces of equipment getting thrown away or just walking away type thing.
So that next finding, findings four is truck transfer form is missing needed information. The truck transfer form is the form that is used by the schools to either transfer the fixed asset to another school, or if they do want it surplus, transfer it to the warehouse. And that's the way it kind of seems accounting, it's a warehouse. We found that, um, during this process, not all the information needed on that form like asset tag number, location description was being included. And like we had mentioned before, sometimes people were adding fixed assets to the pallet that weren't then being added to the truck transfer form. What was happening then, a lot of times would have the schools say, well, I surplus that years ago, but accounting never received that record. And so there was the schools having to re-account for things that they had believed to be surplus, whether it somehow got missed in that process, whether the fixed asset IT wasn't included on there, or they had put more pallet or more fixed assets on the pallet than there really should have been. And the warehouse isn't able to take a pallet of all of these things and try to decipher it themselves on that truck transfer form. So we listed that there's some room for improvement on there, making some of the fields necessary because we found that it was easy to actually bypass a lot of the needed information on there, as well as some additional training that could be provided to the schools on the importance of the form and how to make sure that you're enlisting everything, as well as working with accounting to say, hey, you know, possibly did you get this form? Or what else additional information might be needed on there? So that kind of ties with the previous finding was when they're surpricing items that they're putting, if they're not putting things on the report, on the truck transfer form that should be, then that's going to play into items being older on the fixed asset report that aren't being surplus when really they thought they would have been. And management's responses were, um, responsive, and they will be looking at that form, which I think was on their radar. The last finding, which is a little bit more simple, was the schools did not submit the fixed asset physical, physical inventory to accounting in a timely manner. Just this year previously, so, um, twenty twenty-two, schools were submitting fixed asset inventory list to accounting at year end. So as they're going through the, um, process of kind of closing out the schools, they were taking inventory as well. In twenty twenty-three, that was updated to have them trip, to submit it to accounting in July, I'm sorry, uh, January thirty-first. That was on the radar, but what we found is not everyone was looking at that. And so somehow that was being missed specifically by eleven schools didn't submit the fixed asset inventory to accounting on time, which then holds up accounting on what they need to be able to do to review the process. So our recommendation was making sure that deadline is included in the manual because that was something that we found that it wasn't actually in the manual, as well as, um, adding some additional deadlines or some additional, um, on the radar posts out there. So schools can kind of see the importance and understand the deadline and when it's coming and have a heads up.
It sounds like this is a change that was just implemented. Most of the schools didn't even shoot it on time, but now we will have a plan to get everybody on the same page in some years. But the record member will send us on. Um, any board members have additional questions about finding five or?
Yeah, or any other findings? I can go over anything, so I apologize if I went too quick on it or.
My only comment was a hundred and twenty thousand dollars at one school, you know, five thousand at one school. Almost as much as it would be real money. So it is concerning, that's a lot of money.
This was the first fixed asset audit ever done at ASD. So with that being said, I think they, you know, the schools were very, very responsive and very helpful. I appreciate that.
So the first fixed asset.
Uh, yeah, we were being, first thing, from my understanding, the first review we've really, we've done.
And then we have a baseline.
Yeah, exactly.
And four.
We had a contractor go out and count all of them, I think back in two thousand eight. It's taken to remember that, but even that, you know, they went out and spent weeks out at each school counting everything. And still there was a lot of issues even after that. So it was, that's, it's just a huge volume of things to try to get your, get our hands around. You know, thank, uh, internal audit for doing this work. It really kind of opens our eyes, things we can improve on and more training shows schools are always going to be beneficial.
And I think also just considering, you know, turnover that we've had at our schools at leadership positions and in, in classrooms, um, one of the benefits of tension might be longer memory patterns. I know I haven't seen them learn.
Yeah.
Great, well, thank you so much for your work, providing transparency and oversight and direction. I look forward to the newer version of it the next time. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so President Bellamy is here in person. So I think we have six board members online or in person, which is great. Um, I'd like us to move to the second item on our agenda. Have a paper agenda, but it's officially labeled district cost factor discussion.
I'm sorry, what time do you close?
To invite Mark Foster to share some research that he has been conducting that might, um, shake conversations over time.
Thank you, ma'am.
Just stay awake.
Oh, it's welcome, welcome.
Thank you. Um, and thank you, superintendent. This is a longstanding concern of mine that dates back to when I first came on board as the budget director and CFO of the school district, um, almost ten years ago now. And the issue in a nutshell is the district cost factors used in the funding formula for the state were based on FY two thousand to two thousand and three data. They have not been updated. Circumstances have changed significantly over the past twenty-plus years. It is my assessment that I will share with you shortly in detail that Anchorage has been on the losing end of that development as the district cost factors, um, need to be updated to reflect the differential in costs that now exist on the key cost categories, including teacher compensation, energy costs and others. And I think we have sufficient public record evidence to suggest it's timely to take a serious look at the issue and begin what will inevitably be a challenging statewide negotiation over any transition to a more equitable funding, um, of the districts. And so I think that's, that's it in a nutshell. The executive summary on page three, uh, is just a reminder about when those district cost factors were developed. And a reminder that after those district cost factors developed and received by the legislature, it took them approximately three years to negotiate a change. And the change was implemented over a period of four years, or FY oh-nine, FY thirteen. So it's, it is a, it is a heavy political lift inevitably. Um, you'll see this not only in Alaska and other states, but I would like to encourage your consideration of, if you don't get started on them, you never get there. Um, and I do think there's, there's a significant amount of money on the table. So if I look at independent studies by Iser on teacher salaries and energy costs and total those changes up and roll them through the district cost factors using that methodology, you can see essentially the results there on page three, um, where there are, the red indicates the change in the cost factor that would occur if we updated the cost factors from the old days. And you'll see it's mostly reducing the increments in many of the districts and increasing in a few that you'll see in that slight red above. So what's that, what are we looking at in that graph? The district cost factor is the vertical Y axis, Anchorage is at one. The school size adjusted ADM, against which the district cost factor is applied in the formula, is the X axis. So you get a sense of the magnitude of the district cost factor in terms of funding. A height multiplied by the ADM that's adjusted for school size. We'll look at this in greater detail for those who are interested later in the presentation. This is just the, the preview piece. So you have a sense of the magnitude of the adjustments. On their face, statewide, doesn't look significant. Peel it back and look at the dollar amounts that will require negotiations. Page four is just the timeline, just to remind you how old, um, the stuff is in terms of the data and the length of time that was required to negotiate. Then the other two key pieces of information on the timeline, I'm using the most recent statewide compensation study by Iser in two thousand and fifteen to look at potential changes in compensation to reflect salaries that are required to attract and retain teachers at each district around the state. Two thousand and twenty-one, you'll see they did a study of energy costs, and I've used that to update the energy cost portion of the analysis. So if we look at the, page five is simply the existing cost factors on the Y and the school size adjusted average daily membership on the X. So you get a sense of the magnitude of those cost factors for each of the districts that multiply against the base student allocation.
So this is the second era. So this is a good example of, for ASD, we don't have forty-six thousand or so actual students. But when we add value to a small school, but a decrepit artlet high school, the net result is?
The net result is approximately fifty thousand adjusted ADM against which the district cost factor is applied. So I think it's, um, I think it's important to apply the district cost factor to the number in the formula where the action is, rather than go, oh, the enrollment. And you'll see that in Galena, for example, where you have a large correspondence enrollment, but a relatively small number of students that are actually in attendance in the facilities there. And so the energy cost factor as a result is way out of whack, right? So you really want to focus in on where is the, where is the factor get applied? really want to focus in on where is the, where is the factor get applied in the formula? Because that's really where it's important. Couple of things to remember is when we're doing district cost factors, prior methodology and the one that's, in fact, quite common, if I look across states, is they ask themselves, what are the key things that are different across our state? Wyoming has some of the same sort of things going on. They got sort of urban, suburban, and more rural areas, so they have some district cost factors there. And so they go, okay, what are the key things? Teachers, classified employees, administration, energy, goods and services, and travel. So the, each of those areas then gets evaluated to see how it compares to the benchmark. Historically, it's been Anchorage. And then they do a weighted average of those factors. So that's the key thing to keep in mind. And so what I've done is I've taken a look at the public record data we have on teachers and energy based on those Iser studies. And the other thing I want to note before I get into that is there have been a lot of changes over the last 20 years in how we spend our money in schools in Alaska statewide. And those are summarized at a high level on page eight. And it's a reminder that in a relative proportion, we are spending more money on special ads and support services and instructions. And I gave you a list of the support services and instructions there, there at the bottom of page eight, to give you some sense of the kinds of things that have been stacking up over the last 20 years. But it's, it's not critical to this analysis. It's just a reminder that there have been a number of changes. And it's another good reason to go, it might be timely to look at relative costs across the state, because we have seen a number of changes in how we spend our money.
Just one comment here. One of the things I've seen in the past is that when you look at the growth in dollars, it almost all goes in the fringe benefits. And that factor gets to be weighed in, is way out of whack.
And that is, that is certainly a factor in the teacher compensation study.
Okay.
So that gets reflected there.
That's what is reflected.
Yep.
Okay, that's fine.
Page nine, I took the Iser summary report when they did their cost study that shows up in the research summary and look at teachers, administration, energy, et cetera, and compare that to 2023 data that I've been able to put together. The preliminary data is on there, and I want to highlight, we see a slight decrease in teachers, slight increase in administrative functions, support functions, a significant difference in energy costs, which I want to highlight because I think it's going to get worse for Anchorage and not better. And then the other ones are relatively similar. So I'm going to go to 11 and start looking at the key differences among districts. Teacher compensation. For those of you who may not have had a chance to review the UAA Iser study from 2015, it's a very interesting study presented to Legislative Budget and Audit, looking at the pay that is indicated by an attract and retain model. What do we need to pay to attract and retain for each of the districts in Alaska compared to Anchorage? So there on page 11, you'll see why the report attracted a lot of attention among those districts that have the red circles, which is to say their salaries were higher than what was required relative to an Anchorage pay schedule.
That take into those government defined benefit issues, the competitiveness, did they consider that?
It was essentially saying, what do we need to pay to attract and retain? And where is that sort of break even point on the salary schedule? And it basically showed that Anchorage was behind. And in part, that's due to the high cost of housing and especially entry-level housing relative to other areas. Anyway, as you might imagine, those folks who said, what, my Anchorage salaries need to be higher than these rural areas, attracted a lot of pushback. And so this is a challenging negotiation. And this is just highlighting why you'll see on the next page the net result. If I index those costs based on that more recent study in 2015 and make the adjustments and compare that to the model that was used to develop the existing district cost factors, you'll see the blue dot is the old Iser study, the red dot is the 15 years later Iser study. Anchorage is still indexed at one. You'll notice Fairbanks, Haynes, Juno, Ketchikan, Sitka, Valdez, would go down relative to Anchorage. So you might have to rebase it in some way, or rebase it to Anchorage and then figure out some transition plan. You'll note there are a few there with the red, with the green arrows that go the other way. So it is not exclusively a compression relative to Anchorage. Copper River, Kodiak, Telukon on Alaska stand out as places where it looked like it was going to hit the other way on that 2015 data. So that gives you a sense of the regional dynamics. And you'll note, by and large, there's compression in terms of smaller cost factors for the rural areas. I've had a number of inquiries about, well, why would that be? What's changed in the last 20 years that would make it not quite as hard to attract and retain teachers to rural Alaska? If you look back over a 20-year time horizon, federal government has invested billions of dollars in sewer and water, Alaska Native Tribal Health Clinics, hospitals. There's been billions of dollars invested in the energy infrastructure in rural Alaska. So indeed, relative to 20-plus years ago, the infrastructure, both physical and the health infrastructure in terms of services by Alaska Native Tribal Health have increased dramatically. So that could in fact be one of the considerations about why things are better than they used to be in terms of being able to attract and retain teachers.
Do they still get the advantage of the loan forgiveness and that used to be a factor? I know, I don't know if it's a factor.
There's, there's different loan forgiveness opportunities, and there are different teacher housing opportunities as well that have grown up over that time period. So I do think there are some, in fact, rational explanations relative to large investments that have been made over the time period. Flipping ahead, page 13 there is the energy cost. I got the data from the UAF researcher at the Alaska Center for Energy and Power, who was working with Iser to look at the energy costs for that time period that they had, 1819, and applied that to average daily membership after the adjustment, the school size factor, to basically come up with, what does that look like? And you'll see Galena is the thing that's out of whack because in part, the adjusted ADM for the school size factor is 4.25, where they might have 4,000 enrolled in a corresponded school. So that's the one thing that will be out of whack. So when you look at page 14, that at least gives you the explanation for why Galena appears to go the other direction. It's the large change in correspondence. So looking at page 14, the blue is the prior cost study from essentially 20 years ago. The red is the FY 19 cost study. So how would it look relative to Anchorage? And you'll notice Juno, Matsu, and Valdez all appear to be below the energy costs of Anchorage at the district level on a dollar per adjusted ADM.
The Juno, it is high kilowatt charge.
How does it come out ahead? The hydro projects deliver low-cost energy in Juno relative to our natural gas prices that are rising.
Just kind of cute.
Yeah. And that's the other reason Valdez is doing well, is because the hydro projects they have served.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. So the net effect is if you, and this is, page 15 is a repeat of the executive summary chart. So if you apply the teacher cost differential and energy cost differentials and redevelop essentially the energy cost factor, excuse me, the district cost factors, the top chart shows you the change. The bottom chart shows you the net result. So I would just offer as an opening that that bottom chart on page 15, the net result isn't significantly different compared to the current situation at a high level. It still preserves significant cost differentials across districts in Alaska. It will be a tough, tough negotiation to get those inches. Couple other things. The observations are the same as the executive summary. Are the results from this particular application of those Iser cost studies sort of reasonable on their face? I tried to double check that in Appendix A by looking at other cost of living differentials across the state, including the Council for Economic and Research, and then the military cost of living adjustments that they have across the state. And you can see that the magnitude and direction of the changes are consistent with those two independent studies looking at cost differentials. Page 18, if you fast forward and you think about what a change in district cost factors could mean if we have an increase in the BSA in the upcoming session, what it could mean is we would bump up against the local Anchorage tax cap. So your successful advocacy at a state level, readjusting those, might put you up against another interesting cost puzzle. And I highlight that by thinking about, at statehood, we were paying 12 mils for schools. Under the current tax cap, we can't push, push much much stuff. So just be mindful that before you run down there and go, I need to get this changed, you want to think through the next step afterwards, which is, am I going to get anything out of this other than some state money? Because I'm going to bump up against that local cap. So just be mindful of that local cap. It's going to bite you. Appendix C is just a reminder about the magnitude and direction of energy cost outlook in Cook, Emma, which would include Anchorage, Matsu, and Kenon. Those three districts are all facing a significant increase in the cost of natural gas. And they're going to be put in the squeeze to be asked, well, why don't you support a subsidy to help with natural gas prices? And I want to explicitly caution you against falling into that trap, because natural gas market is a virtual monopoly. Subsidizing monopoly is a high-risk venture that will not be a high-value return because the monopoly is in a position to pocket a great deal of that subsidy rather than give it directly to the consumers. Whereas a direct appropriation to the district, a highly regulated industry, is highly likely to yield significantly more benefits. That's it in a nutshell. Happy to answer questions.
Well, we'll start with member questions. At the end, if you can tell me if there are any online, something, Member Higgins has a question right off the bat.
Cut. One of the things we want to, I say, go ahead and revisit what they did in the late 90s, but they didn't want to do it because of the politics. And I realize that within the legislature. And so you've got piecemeals that you're putting together that some people may dispute whether or not it matches to what was in the 90s. So is there an alternative to Iser getting a similar study so that we can have apples to apples?
There are certainly consulting groups who've worked for states where they have differentials who could come and do it. I think it's worth considering forming, who would you want to have on essentially the stakeholder advisory group? And, and form that governance committee of the study group rather than trying to sort of outsmart, who do we get for this? Get the stakeholder group together and then go, okay, who do we trust to work through these challenging issues? And I think that's the threshold question.
But is that, but it's also, which one would hold up in court? There's an obligation here with the federal of equity funding. So you're concerned about the cap here that's there with the, with the local government. I mean, I realize that, but then we have to adjust what those caps should be, that we should be higher. Then that should compensate for the, for the contribution we're getting from the municipality, shouldn't it?
There is, it's possible to construct that. I think the other thing you might, one you might love is the state constitution essentially requires equity in the system as the courts have interpreted. And I think there is a colorable argument that it has become inequitable because Anchorage is out of whack relative to the rest of the state money, and it has been held down. So I do think there's that additional angle to consider in terms of the negotiations.
So we have this issue, and I guess always both at the same time, as issues as always adding funding and code. And, and then if we look at alternatives to energy sources and our contribution, I mean, all of that formula will be adjusted down. If we pump up with alternatives, just like you said, Kodiak, I mean, that's a place with 100% plus renewable. But if we look at comparisons of that, that should be adjusting down the contribution they receive.
And I want to highlight that, because I do think it brings up another question. Why don't we adjust this more frequently? And in Wyoming, they came to the conclusion that it makes sense to adjust some costs annually. So they do an annual adjustment for like energy costs.
To take.
That's right. So that factor is changing. The factor that they study and don't do every year because of the magnitude of the study is teacher compensation, about what does it take to attract and retain. But they at least talk about getting on a regular schedule so they don't fall on.
Did the compensation look at national data as to what Alaska needed, or did it look at it internal?
Compensation study is, is really focused on what can we discover about, what level does it take to attract and retain teachers to our district? So Anchorage, where historically over half of the teachers are coming from outside, comes up with a different number. Because we're, our pool, if you will, the market we're drawing from is different. Other districts are drawing from within Alaska predominantly. And so that's one of the significant differences that's driving the difference in the model results.
Level market.
Yeah, it's, it's your relevant market that you're getting your, your teachers from.
I'm going to pause your questions.
And actually, he had that, that series actually included many of my questions. But I'm just curious, Mark. Thank you for your time. And it's good to see you. How, what are your thoughts on litigation? And I want to be honest, because, I mean, I know that it's probably more than a two-minute answer, and we can get offline, but I'm curious.
If you want to have a serious conversation about litigation, I think I would do that in an executive session, quite frankly. Because I do think there are opportunities there. Because I do think there are opportunities there. Um, and they, they start with understanding legal memos that have been written to. The previous commissioner of education in Dunleavy's first year. And understanding the framework that has been set up within that set of legal briefs. Um, before you proceed, so I do think there's a, a significant sort of legal analysis. And a significant political analysis layer. And I think I would defer to your attorneys as to how much of that is inside executive session? And how much of that needs to be in the public?
Yeah.
Before I dive in, because I'm afraid I might share more than I need to.
Well, I was just really interested in your perspective, uh, but, um.
Yeah, no, and I, yeah, exactly. I think I want to, I want to be a little deferential to. If Anchorage wants to advocate, I think they want to think a little bit about their litigation and political strategy. And just think it through before they start producing public documents.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're going to call up questions online. Um, I had a question and this was really, we had a couple of initials, casual exchanges. But you had brought up the cost of energy and so I went into our prior budgets. And made a very rudimentary graph of our energy prices, object thirty-five hundred, cost of heating buildings. That's great. I mean, if the line goes up really sharply and, um, what you're suggesting about what the future portends with. Cost of natural gases is terrifying, right? If our anticipated projection for FY twenty-four is over seven million dollars for heating our buildings. We're talking it's going to double because that's, um, that raises PTR across the board if it doubles. Um, so this is the, the cost of energy alone is cutting into our students' educational opportunities. What we can provide for them based on. Data that hasn't been updated since. Long before today's students were born.
Oh, thanks, Madam Chair, can you hear me?
Uh, yes.
Yeah, um, hey, Mark, thanks for doing this. Is there a place in the report and, you know, it was really tiny on my screen here where there's a, any kind of estimate or projection? And if we were in an actual accurate differential cost, what that would mean financially to the Anchorage School District?
I deliberately didn't put a dollar amount in this presentation. You can estimate it by looking at the size of the blocks. On the adjusted ADM times the school cost factor and multiplying that by. The base student allocation.
All right, well, see you tomorrow.
All right. Do a little back of the envelope now.
I, but I'm, I'm happy to do that, but I don't know that you want to put that in the public record because that will. Tend to create a lot of gravity around those who feel like they might not be gaining in this realignment.
Okay, do you have a follow up, Member Donley? Do you have a sense that a change district cost factor? Changes the scale of the state's investment in public education? Or does it just slice the pie up the existing pie in a different way? Does it grow the pie and redistribute it? Or is it just redistributed?
I think the political reality is if you're going to change the sizes of the pie slices. You have to do it when you have an increase in funding. So that there are no net losers in the transition. And that's certainly the historic case in Alaska and the historic record in Wyoming.
I think that's a really good closing prediction.
Yeah.
Um, we have just, do you have one quick question?
Couple, just real quick. One, the bike assault study never concluded or considered information that the teacher salary needs to be adjusted as well. For any adjustment like that to be competitive, right? So the bike assault study is just assumes that you're adding more teachers to get classroom sizes at all. Based upon current costs, is that pretty accurate?
Hey, that study did not address compensation levels, that's correct.
Okay. And, and I, I just want to thank you for this thing and I agree with you that this is a, um, a controversial issue. Because anytime you're redividing a pie, you got one of those losers and we've always known that. And within that, we have to decide, but I appreciate that comment as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, that's a lit thoughtful approach to our situation. We have just a couple more minutes, I did want to pivot to the third item on our agenda, which is. I'm hoping there is a follow up, is there? Is there any updated D E guidance regarding the sort of tax cap question? That we explored in our joint meeting with the Assembly?
We have not received any formal guidance from D on that. Anecdotally, I guess they had met with Juno and verbally walked back some of the criteria that there would be. Uh, within that disparity test. However, we haven't got any official thing from D or anything. My understanding is they're putting it through a legal review before they submit it to us. I don't know if Mark's heard anything, I think he's been involved in that as well. That's the last update I have is.
My knowledge parallels.
Okay, so is that something that I guess we, ASD has requested explicitly? Or we just heard is generally coming through the pipeline?
D is aware that we want written guidance on it.
No, you talked about the municipal cap.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, could, could, could you walk, could you maybe give a brief overview of what has happened?
Sure.
Juno since our last conversation?
As far as I know, they've only had a meeting with, they've had a meeting with D after, or a couple of weeks ago. But anything there was verbal, you know, and I speculate exactly what we're inspired, but. There's things like transportation that was going to be included in the local cap that was historically excluded from it. That is going to continue to be excluded potentially. I mean, that's the biggest one for us. There's other things like pre-K that are kind of, that's kind of a gray area now that the state's funding it. Whether it's considered, you know, state funded instruction, which would be inside the cap versus. Um, a special revenue fund like transportation would be outside. So they, we've requested a determination on some of those things, but still have yet to receive it.
If you could please. We need, we need order the board entirely, we're happy to put that on the finance committee, but it sounds like. Some of the worst case scenario that was presented at our joint meeting, whereas, you know, we're in, you know, next year, ASD would leave something like seven million dollars. May not take place if D is walking back this.
Right, but I mean, we won't know for sure until we get the guidance, I don't want to say exactly what they're doing. But that's, that's my indication so far, but again, nothing in writing.
All right, let's get it ready and we'll frame it on the wall. Okay, with that, I think that our finance meeting, um, we can wrap it up.
Thank you guys.
Our next meeting will be the first Thursday of.
November second.
November, which is November second and.